Good evening, Wareham, and welcome to the Select Board meeting of June 3. May I have a roll call, please?
With us is Member Joe Chadwick, Chair Judy Whiteside, Member Marcus Gomes, Clerk Sarah Corbett, and on Zoom is Member Joe Still. Also on Zoom is the Town Administrator Derek Sullivan and Town Council Rich Bowen.
Thank you. I declare that we have a quorum. May I have the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Chad?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, to the republic of which this stands, to the Constitution of our nation under God, with all his wisdom and liberty and justice for all. I just have this weird déjà vu.
Okay. Resident comments. Is there anyone in the audience who would choose to speak on something that is not on the agenda? Please identify yourself for the record, and you may have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Sandy Slaven. Reappointments are on the agenda, but not appointments, so I'm here to make a plea to the general public: We need members. On the Conservation Commission, we are short three associates. If you care about our wetlands and you care about an environment, here's a good place to step up and learn how you can help us. We meet on the first and third Wednesday, starting at 6:30. That's Conservation Commission Three. Now, we also have a member-at-large opening for CPC, Community Preservation Committee. If you care about how to spend the millions of dollars we collect for CPC, join us. We meet on the second and fourth Wednesday at 6 o'clock in the multi-service-- sorry, in Town Hall. So, three for conservation and one for community preservation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. One question for you. The associate members are one-year appointments. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And the CPC one is for how long? I'm going to make you do that three more, four times.
I'll go dizzy.
Yeah.
It's a normal membership of three years.
Thank you.
They're not being appointed by another committee at all, there and at large, without any affiliation to any other sitting committee.
Thank you.
Do I sit up one more time? Isn't that the wicked witch?
No, we're all set. Thank you, Ms. Slaven. Is there anyone else in the audience who chooses to speak to us? Noah? Nobody online. Thank you. Announcements. Mr. Gomes?
To racketeer off of that, there actually is a lot of committees in town that we need to fill shoes on. As, you know, former Chair of the Wareham Cultural Council, we are very needy to get people, especially when I stepped out and joined on the board. It's something that people in town should really get behind, you know, learn more about it, and help where you can.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Mr. Still, do you have any announcements?
Yes, I do, Madam Chair. Speaking to the audience here, June 8 at 10:00 a.m., Don't Trash Wareham is in need of some volunteers on a cleanup down on Recovery Road. It's 10:00 a.m. on June 8. We have waters, trash bags, and everything else you'll need. Come join us, and let's do a good thing on a Sunday.
Do you have trash?
Trash bags.
No, do you have trash? It was a joke, Joe. Sorry.
I'm oblivious.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chadwick?
I have none.
Thank you. I have a few. On Saturday, June 7, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Wareham Municipal Maintenance Garage at 95 Charge Pond Road, we have a Wareham and Carver Residence Community Shred Event. You must have a valid transfer station sticker to participate. This event is for paper only. On Sunday, June 8, from 7:30 to 5:00 p.m., excuse me, the Harvest Triathlon is being hosted by Max Performance. It's on the Make Peace property at 150 Tyhonet Road, and those interested in participating can compete in one of two triathlons. The information is online at maxperformanceonline.com/harvestttri. So if you feel like biking, that would be a good place to try it. On Monday, the 16th, from 5:00 to 7:00, the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan Hearing will be held, and that was already addressed in a prior meeting, but I just want to make sure that the public is aware of this. The Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan outlines Wareham's 20-year planning strategy for nitrogen and wastewater management to meet public health and environmental needs in the town. This meeting is being held to prepare for Wareham's upcoming submission of the plan to the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act Office. Public informational meeting is an opportunity to ask further questions about information that has been presented at public meetings and to obtain more information about this project. And I believe that the Commissioner, Sewer Commissioner, has told us that the draft of that management plan will be online in the next several days. And then finally, Turning Point is sponsoring a financial workshop on June 9 from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. at 770 Main Street, which is the old American Legion Hall. The discussion will include information on solving financial difficulties and balancing personal finances. Anyone who's facing budget challenges or wants to improve their credit score is urged to attend. And you don't-- yeah, it's not required-- you're not required to sign in, so you could drop in, but if you want to sign up, you could go to turningpoint@wareham@gmail.com. And then on June 14, we have the grand opening of the Lopes Playground and Park. From 11:00 to 1:00, there will be some surprise guests, and most of the playground is complete. We will be completing the perimeter path in the fall. And that's that. So, we will now go to appointments.
I have no announcements.
Oh, I'm sorry. I already asked you, and I forgot that I asked you. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Announcements? I mean, appointments?
So I move to reappoint to the Alternative Energy Committee Donald Wilson with a term to expire June 30, 2028, and Denise Wolk with a term to expire June 30, 2027.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. It is read. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, aye, it is so.
I move to reappoint to the Cemetery Commission Susan M. Akins, term to expire June 30, 2028.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve, but I think this is her second term. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still? Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Still, are you there?
Yes, aye.
Thank you. And myself, aye, it is so.
I move to reappoint to the Conservation Commission Kawaye Barte, terms to expire June 30, 2028, Jessica Parr, term to expire June 30, 2027, and-- Sorry, I'm sorry. Do we need to appoint Scott Sobie, or did we already did that?
No.
No.
We need to--
So I also move to appoint Dr. Scott Sobie as a member with a term to expire June 30, 2028.
All right, now, second.
Thank you.
Thought you were doing it in two parts. My apologies.
That's okay. Motion made in seconded for those three appointments. Is there any further discussion on that appointment? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, aye, it is so.
I move to reappoint to the Council on Aging, Board of Directors Elaine LeMoyne with a term to expire June 30, 2028.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to reappoint Ms. LeMoyne. Any further discussion? She has a great Corvette that she runs in the parade. It's awesome. Never mind. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, aye, it is so.
I move to reappoint to the Historic District Commission Robert Blair with a term to expire June 30, 2028, and Angela Dunham with a term to expire June 30, 2028.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve. It is read. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, aye, it is so.
I move to appoint to the Historical Commission-- to reappoint to the Historical Commission Robert Blair with a term to expire June 30, 2028, and Leonard Buten with a term to expire June 30, 2027.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve. It is read into the record. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, aye, it is so. Let me just state for the record that all of these appointments or reappointments have had the person apply online, as well as has the recommendation from the committee that they are probably being reappointed to. They don't make it on this agenda until all of that paperwork is done, because we need to keep our paperwork straight in the office, we need to keep the term straight, and this is all-- we have a computer system now that is tracking these appointments, and some committees have term limits, so it's very important that we do it really according to Hoyle, if you will. Go ahead.
I move to reappoint to the Minutet Force Committee Linda Scharf with a term to expire June 30, 2026.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to appoint Ms. Scharf. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Nay.
And myself, nay. She is appointed three to two. Next.
I move to reappoint to the Open Space Committee Patrick Lester with a term to expire June 30, 2028, and Sandra Slaven with a term to expire June 30, 2028.
I would like you to separate that one, please.
Okay, let me restate that.
Thank you.
I move to reappoint to the Open Space Committee Patrick Lester with a term to expire June 30, 2028.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to appoint Mr. Lester. It is read into the record. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, no. Next.
I move to reappoint to the Open Space Committee Sandra Slaven with a term to expire June 30, 2028.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to reappoint. It is read into the record. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, aye, it is so. We have two more minutes.
I move to reappoint to the Recycling Committee Amanda Cobb with a term to expire June 30, 2028.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to reappoint Ms. Cobb. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, aye, it is so.
Can I move to-- myself?
Let's hold that one.
You want me to do it?
Yes, please.
I move to appoint-- reappoint to the Redevelopment Authority Sarah Corbett with a term to expire May 26, and Juth Whiteside, term to expire May 26.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to reappoint both of those members. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Hmm, yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, aye, it is so. Veterans Council, we're going to leave that blank at the moment, and we're going to-- I'm going to do three more, and then we will go into the hearing. Okay, thank you. Wareham Affordable Housing-- go ahead.
I move to reappoint to the Wareham Affordable Housing Trust Sandra Slaven with a term to expire June 30, 2027.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. It is read into the record. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, aye, it is so.
I move to reappoint to the Wareham Cultural Council Denise Rose with a term to expire June 30, 2028.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to reappoint Ms. Rose. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, aye, it is so. Does he begin?
Okay, I thought we were moving on. I move to reappoint as an associate member to the Zoning Board of Appeals Christopher Conti with a term to expire June 30, 2026, and as a full member, I move to reappoint Nazi El Kalasi with a term to expire June 30, 2030.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. It is read into the record. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, aye, it is so. I now declare that it is 7:15, and so, Ms. Corbett, I would ask that you make a motion to open a hearing for the Poor Farm, and would the petitioners please come forward? And we'll get-- we'll ask you for identification, everything, in a moment. Yep.
I move to open the hearing to-- for the application for a new all-alcoholic beverage license, Tavern Hospitality LLC, doing business as the Poor Farm Tavern, 196 Main Street, Wareham, Jennifer McHugh, manager. Notice is hereby given that the Select Board has received an application from Tavern Hospitality LLC, doing business as the Poor Farm Tavern, Jennifer McHugh, manager, for a Section 12 All-Alcoholic Beverages Restaurant License to be exercised at 196 Main Street, Wareham, Massachusetts 02571. The premise is described as a single-story wood frame, 1,200 square-foot indoor seating, and 1,200 square-foot fenced-in outdoor seating establishment with three entrances, three exits, the seating capacity of 90, total square footage 2,400 feet. It is ordered that a public hearing be held on said application on Tuesday, June 3, 2025, during the Select Board's meeting at approximately 7:15, meeting to be held in person and remotely.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion made in seconded to open the hearing. Is there any further discussion on the motion to open the hearing? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, yes, the hearing is now open. What I'm going to do is ask you individuals to identify yourself for the record and let us know what your plans are and what you envision doing with this property. So, go ahead.
I'm Jennifer McHugh.
Brad Cardoza.
We are the owners of Tavern Hospitality. We currently own and operate Poor Farm Tavern in New Bedford. We are looking to open our second Poor Farm Tavern in Wareham. Our goal and our mission, what we do in New Bedford, what we plan to bring here is that it's a quiet neighborhood bar, bar and restaurant. So, we like to be a neighborhood spot. People come in, they're casual, come in as they are, have a drink, have some food, and community. So, that's what we're looking to bring here. We'll have a small kitchen there. We'll be focusing on bar pizzas, salads, great fresh local food, and then also focusing on craft beer and cocktails as well.
Excellent. And where are you going to be located?
196 Main Street.
Which is the former Scarlet Rose?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions?
Do you guys plan on having Belgian White on tap?
Alagash is dedicated, yeah.
When do you guys open?
As soon as you tell us we can.
You got my vote. I'm the goofy one of the group.
Any other questions?
No.
I just want to thank you for choosing to do business on Main Street in particular. It's a particular focus of a lot of the energy that's spent on behalf of certain members of our boards and committees, so really do welcome you to Main Street.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I noticed that you're going to have to apply for a common vic in order to also serve food, so just go online and do that. The ABCC paperwork might take a couple of weeks or something, but we can get that one done, the common vic, on the, what's, 17th? No. Yeah, 17th.
Yes, 17th.
June 17th, so, thank you. Is there any further questions for these individuals?
No. Thank you.
Comments? Thank you. I'll accept a motion to close the hearing?
I move to close the hearing for the Poor Farm Tavern, application for a new Section 12 All-Alcoholic Beverages License for Tavern Hospitality LLC, doing business as the Poor Farm Tavern at 196 Main Street, Wareham, Jennifer McHugh, manager.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, aye, it is so. All of the paperwork is in order. We will send it out, I'm guessing, Monday? I'm not really sure. Takes not too long for the ABCC to turn around, and you've done all of your applications and all of your building inspections, I believe.
Some of them are still in progress.
Right.
But everything has been started, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Can't wait.
And we are--
We have to move to approve. Did you-- we just closed.
We just closed the hearing?
Yes.
Yeah, we just closed it.
Oh, okay, so go ahead. Before we do that, though, do you want to talk about that tax program?
Yeah. I, as well as being on the Select Board, I'm also on the Wareham Redevelopment Authority, and as part of that group, I know that we have the ability to offer a tax credit for businesses who are already established and choose to open a new location on Main Street. That's a particular zoning corridor that we're desperately-- well, I didn't say desperately, eagerly trying to redevelop. And it's because of my position on the Wareham Redevelopment Authority. It's a focus of mine, which is why I'm so excited that you guys are choosing us and Main Street in particular. So, how can we enable them to understand more about this tax program?
Okay, I don't think that we've actually been okayed for that program yet, and when it is-- it's actually a state tax rebate, basically.
Yeah, it's a rebate.
So it has nothing to do with the real estate tax or anything like that. But as soon as we are aware that we can do that-- Mr. Sullivan's looking at me. I'm not sure we've signed up for it yet or been approved for it yet, then we will let you know.
Great.
Okay, now, take a motion.
Okay, so now, I approve-- I move to approve the application for a new Section 12 All-Alcoholic Beverage License for Tavern Hospitality LLC, doing business as the Poor Farm Tavern, 196 Main Street, Wareham, Jennifer McHugh, manager.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, aye, it is so. Thank you very much, and thank you for choosing to do business in Wareham.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go back to the recommendations under O.
So, these are the recommendations for people that are sitting on one committee to be a representative on a second committee. So I move to reappoint to the Community Preservation Commission-- Committee Patrick Lester as the Open Space Representative with a term to expire June 30, 2026.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to confirm that recommendation. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, no. Next.
I move to reappoint Sandra Slaven to the Open Space Commission-- Committee as a Conservation Commission Representative, term to expire June 30, 2026.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to reappoint. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, yes, it is so. Okay, I will accept a motion on-- there are two applications for Water Whiz?
So I read the whole thing?
Do one at a time, please. So the first one would be the common vic.
I move to approve the application for renewal of the following common vic terlo license under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 140 for the year 2025, pending departmental approvals, for WW Cranberry Highway Incorporated, doing business as Water Whiz of Cape Cod, 3031 Cranberry Highway, East Wareham, Massachusetts 02538, Jonathan Bizier, manager.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve the common vic. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Sorry, quick question. This has nothing to do with the entertainment license, does it?
That's correct.
Okay, then, aye.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Nay.
And myself, aye. I will accept a motion on the-- Public amusement license.
I move to approve the application for renewal of the following public amusement license under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, for the year 2025, pending departmental approvals, and application for modification of license.
Second.
Well, I am unfinished. For WW Cranberry Highway Incorporated, doing business as Water Whiz of Cape Cod, 3031 Cranberry Highway, East Wareham, Massachusetts 02538, Jonathan Bizier, manager.
Now, second.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Motion made and seconded to approve is read into the record. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still.
Nay.
Mr. Chadwick.
Yes.
Mr. Gomes.
Yes.
Ms. Corbett.
Nay.
And myself. Yes, it is so. 0-2. Moving on. Discussion and possible vote to amend the liquor license regulations. You were sent in the packet the sentence that would be added to the liquor license packet that we have. We have, we have a policy that we update from time to time, and so I would accept a motion to simply, a vote to amend our liquor license regulations.
With that language?
With that language in it. Yes, please.
I move to amend our, the Town of Wareham Liquor License Regulations with this language. It shall be prohibited practice to offer Town of Wareham employees or officials any free or discounted beverages.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, is read into the record. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still.
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick.
No.
Mr. Gomes.
Aye.
Ms. Corbett.
Aye.
And myself. Yes, it is so. And... Okay, hang on.
Sorry.
Hang on.
Okay. Continue discussion regarding the liaison side. Do you want to hold one of the briefs?
None with me.
Um...
No.
Can we take two minutes? Just give him two minutes for me.
Aye.
I don't know where they are. And now, the meeting, we have a whole bunch of signatures being required for this. Let's back to you.
Previously, we had gone over some of these liaison changes, and I think I got them right, but maybe not. But we can certainly change them at any time. Thank you so much. The Alternative Energy Committee was Ms. Quirk. Anybody want to volunteer for that one? Okay, it's empty then.
What was it again?
Alternative Energy.
Alternative Energy, which, it's a committee that is discussing alternative energy. I'm not sure when, how often they meet. I don't think it's on here. Hold on a second. Oh, yeah, it is. I'm guessing they meet once a month, but it says as posted.
And to the best of my understanding, they track things, regulations and bills and things like that at the state level, and maybe at the federal level as they apply to the state, the state level as they apply to Wareham. Things like solar and wind, and whatever other alternative energies that may be nascent, so.
I'll hop in on that.
Okay, thank you. The Board of Assessors, I don't think we had anybody volunteer for that, did we?
No.
And they meet as posted. It's usually once a month, I believe. Okay, we'll leave that one blank. Board of Health.
I'd like to stay on that.
You'd like to stay on that?
Yes, please.
Okay. Corbett, Library Trustee.
Yeah, I'd like to stick with that.
Okay. And Marcus, did you want to be in?
Yeah, with the board, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Bylaw, Re-Committee, Joe, was that you? Okay. Thank you. And Capital Planning will be me, Cemetery me, Community Preservation is me, Conservation was Joe, and me as an alternative. Council on Aging is Sarah, Cultural Council is Marcus, Finance Committee is me, Historic District and Historical Commission are both me, unless somebody wants to volunteer.
Hearing none.
I'll go on the Historical Commission.
Which one? Both? Good.
You trying to give up both? I'll take both of them off your hands.
Yeah, I am. You saw what we did with Mr. Still. Little Harbor Advisory, you and me?
Sure.
Okay. Minnet Forest, me, unless somebody else wants to step into that one? You do. Marcus does. Open Space is me, Planning is Jared, Recycling is Sarah.
Mm-hmm.
School Committee.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I took that, yeah.
Okay. I just, I didn't remember. I'm sorry.
And me.
And, yeah, and Jared.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Sewer. Come on, guys. Okay, I'll do it.
We heard what a lot of work is going on on that committee.
Yeah, nope.
My god.
So, you're gonna make me do it?
Yep.
That's so mean.
Here, touch this hot pan.
Okay. Veterans Council is you, and you got a lot of work to do on that one, buddy, because there's only one member. Hmm, okay. And ZBA is Joe. Right? Okay, excellent. And so, I will get those to the office, and they will be updated on the website, et cetera.
So, last time we talked about this, there was all those other things, like Serped.
Yeah, they're not on there.
They're not, we're not talking about them tonight?
No, because unfortunately, I have made a couple of mistakes on this agenda by not including things that I should have, when I woke up at 3:00 in the morning on Saturday and remembered one of them, and then the other one I remembered this morning at noon.
Okay. So, next week, next time.
The next time. So, we will get them on there the next time. And one of them is the Serped.
Yep. I have discussed with...
Sherry. Quirk.
Quirk.
Yep. And Mr. Slavin as well?
Yes.
Okay, excellent.
Well, to date, we'll talk with him and probably today.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. So, we will do those next time. Now, I need a motion to confirm the action that we took under 48-hour business on the 20th, which was to send a letter to Serped regarding technical assistance regarding the ADU bylaws.
So, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to confirm the action. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still.
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick.
Same. I wasn't here. Right?
Okay, yeah.
Oh.
Mr. Gomes.
Aye.
Ms. Corbett.
Aye.
And myself. Aye. So, it is 4...
410?
401.
401.
Yep. And then, any other business not reasonably anticipated? And I have none, so I will go to the Town Administrator's Report. Good evening, Mr. Sullivan. You're looking just ducky today.
Wonderful. That's, I guess that means I don't look ducky on most days, so thank you. Yeah, I'm going to start off with sharing a quick PowerPoint update on Bayview Park. So, can everybody see that?
Yep, yes.
So, that's the, you've seen these, we're getting really close on this. This is the entry point to Bayview Park, coming off of the marks at Mark Anthony's side, walking into it. So, you'll notice those etchings, the granite, the granite blocks located, and I'll show you another section where the granite blocks. One of the really neat things about those, those are all salvaged from the original dummy bridge, when that was replaced in about 2003.
Cool.
So, we held on to those as a part of onset history, and we're able to put it back into the park itself, which is really, which has been phenomenal. So, I love that aspect of it. And the other part I loved about it is it saved about $24,000, believe it or not, by utilizing our own. And I think it just, it really means a lot. So, next one, this is one of the issues we had, was there was a good and a bad with all the rain that we had. When you have too much rain, after something's hydroseeded, it tends to pool, and it wasn't taking as well. So, we had them come back and put some new hydroseed on the location, and that's right in sort of the center of the big circle in the middle. So, we're hoping that to take again, and we're still aiming for the 16th to open up the park itself. And this is, pardon me to see, I'm blocking myself. If you remember, we spoke about the temporary barriers along Onset Avenue. That fence will be put in, along the right-hand side there, will be put up around mid-July. So, we thought about it, and in the meantime, we put these water-filled barriers there so people wouldn't fall into the traffic. They're over 42 inches high, so, but the really neat thing about that is it's showing you how wide that sidewalk still is with those barriers that are placed along it. So, we thought it was more important to open up the park than wait for that section, the fencing, fencing to be in there. But it's, that makes for a really nice boulevard sidewalk walking down Onset Avenue. The gazebo itself, this is the updated ADA accessible gazebo. You can see the ramp, including all-new trek stacking on there, and the railing along it, stainless steel. When you walk in there, if you remember beforehand, it really felt closed in. Now, with all of this, it feels like a really large space, and we think it'll be great not only for people that, for people to access it with accessibility issues, but for events, including especially weddings. And you'll see that there actually, the municipal maintenance team took all the plaques off of there, redid them all, polished them up, and then put the new backing on them. They look fantastic. These are, so, this is another part of the granite pathway, and those are, those are some more of the granite block salvaged from the original dummy bridge. And that's just a really nice function from in between the different, the different landscape features. And again, there's over 51 of the lights in there, the period lights, and benches along the area. This is the entrance point coming from the Cohog Republic, across the sidewalk into there, and that rock was originally donated by the Solarnos and put into the, put into Bayview Park. We wanted to make sure that it was incorporated in the design and function. And that is part of the actual accessible pathways. And you can see some of what we've talked about all along is the stamped concrete, which has a slight tint to it, and then you'll see all the marine life in there, if you will, from scallop shells to the starfish and some other shell features. So, it's really, everybody that's walked through has really enjoyed it. And then, there's our friend, a queen. This is, what I really love about this now is the placing of the bench to our right, and it's like you're sitting with her during this. So, we think it's going to be a really mindful and good experience for folks. This, we still, if you look at the railings going down to the onset center down there, that still needs to be done, those ends, and that'll be done before the, before we reopen. And that's just the update on it. Now, that's, that's been, as you know, taking up a lot of the, a lot of the time. We're going into some of the summer activities as well. If it would ever stop raining, we're trying to get the, municipal maintenance trying to get the road grader out and scraping the roads again. Yeah, that's obviously one of our big functions. You know, so, we have a lot of the projects coming, coming down the pike. I'd like to thank everybody that was involved with the Oyster Festival, from the planners as well, to the, from everybody, from all the departments that were engaged, police, you know, EMS, fire, municipal maintenance, taking the time to open up the back end of Merchant's Way, the old train station bathrooms, and also doing some of the weed whacking in the areas that we can touch along that fence. And one of the other things I want to just bring up is, before our next meeting, I believe Father's Day will occur, and it's something that's been on a lot of people's mind nowadays. You know, Father's Day represents more than just the, you know, biological person. It can be, it can be somebody that's been impactful in your life, that has represented that father figure. So, take some time and let the folks know that it really helped you along the way, or that had a really meaning impact. Let them know what they mean to you, and thank them. So, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Liaison Board reports, comments, Mr. Still?
None for me.
Thank you.
I have none.
Mr. Gomes?
I just wanted to talk about the Memorial Day ceremonies that we had last week. It was, as I had said earlier, when I attended last year, it was, it's just a great way to commemorate those people that have made the greatest sacrifice, and I have to give all kinds of kudos to Colonel...
Stanton.
Stanton. He says a few words at every stop. We had five stops, and every time we stopped, he had a different thing to say. And every time we stopped, we learned something new about Wareham and the people who made the greatest sacrifice for this town. So, it really was a wonderful event, and I would like to see more people at this event next year. I was actually talking with Alan Slavin, Alan and Sandy are faithful participants, about somehow getting the word out a little bit better, maybe next year in some fashion, so that more people would join us. And then, I wanted to reiterate what we've all been saying tonight. We just had a Board of Library Trustees meeting, and we really need new members. People, you know, we have decisions we need to make, and people term out, which is going to be happening to people on that committee. So, it would be really great if someone wanted to join the Library Board of Trustees. It's a great group of people. We meet once a month, and the meetings are not all that long. And you're doing a good service by supporting our library. That's it.
Where can they find information on the Board of Library Trustees?
On the town website. Go to the website, and under Town Government, you see Boards and Committees, and then you can just click on that and see a list of Boards and Committees.
Thanks. I have a couple. I want to thank Dave Menard and his crew. The cemeteries in the Town of Wareham would not be as beautiful as they were for Memorial Day ceremonies without Mr. Menard, making sure that he has meticulously taken care of them. So, Mr. Menard also deserves kudos.